That's troubling to me, it sure is. And I would entertain if anyone would like to separate this. If there's no opposition to separate this, we could amend the motion just to include the technology?
Tracy, can I say something?
If I may, Mr. Nickerson, one of the problems would be is that this resolution is for $304,000, $304,060, and the way that the resolution is written is that you would have to rewrite the whole thing to include what the monthly interest payments would be with the interest, which is something that has been prepared ahead of time. So if you're gonna back that out, I think perhaps you should pass this matter, see if Ms. Johnson could back this out, and if not, maybe pass it for another evening.
It seems like a lot of work for something that's still going to be very valuable down the road.
The only thing I wouldn't support taking it out right now is with what Joe has said with our Public Works Department and with school, we don't know what the impact could be if we took this out right now. I'd hate to find out next year if we have just an equally bad winters we did this year, we leave ourselves a little short. I do think it's a matter for discussion down the road for looking at better ways to utilize our services townwide, but right now, I don't support removing it from the resolution.
Smolberger?
The assets needed regardless where it's used, the assets needed by the town.
We do have your comment that you made at our Board of Ed meeting concerning the maintenance and what makes the most sense and all that stuff. That is on the agenda coming up for the FFO Subcommittee of the Board to start discussing and so on. So we are responding to that, and we're gonna take, yet again, take another fresh look at that concept. And I don't know where the Board's gonna come out on it, but we are gonna be, keep our eyes wide open and try to take a very fresh look at what makes the most sense economically as well as the responsiveness and so forth with respect to these types of topics. So I just want you to, I would just wanna make sure that you're aware of that.
Thank you, Dr. Hagan, Chair of the Board of Ed. Well, you know, okay, taken under advisement for sure. Yes is an asset that's needed, I suppose it would be an easy transfer from Board of Ed to the town budget. And given Dr. Hagan's statement, I can move my hard line in the sand over another couple of feet. And certainly, the next time I have to vote on a piece of equipment, I can remind myself of this moving of the line. So I'm prepared to vote. Any other comments? Okay, we have a motion on the table to include everything that has been brought up tonight, including the dump truck. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
All in favor, all opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed, and one abstention recorded. So three, one, one. Ooh, that could've gone very differently, couldn't it?
Moving rapidly along.
Thank you for your comments, folks, appreciate it. Special appropriation of $189,000 CNRE for various projects consistent with the capital improvement plan without CNRE Fund 32. All the projects are consistent with the capital improvements plan approved at the end of a town meeting on May 12th, 2014. For efficiency purposes, we're forwarding all the projects for authorization at this time. I will let you just read the resolution, should you wish.
Special appropriations, $189,000 CNRE for various projects consistent with the capital improvement plan. Move to appropriate the following projects in CNRE Fund 32, which are consistent with the 2014-2015 capital improvement plan and forward to the Board of Finance for approval. The project would be Town Projects Roof, the amount is $50,000. HVAC Replacement Townwide, $37,000. Town Projects Various, $50,000. Revaluation, $52,000 for a total of $189,000. And note, this requires a town meeting.
I have a motion.
Second.
It's been seconded, any comment?
Yes, the Town Projects Various, is that just to cover miscellaneous things that may arise, or do we have specific things in mind? Which? I can't hear you, Anna.
Neither can the good folks in the north part of town, so you have to find a microphone.
The allocation for town projects is for miscellaneous projects that may come up during fiscal year, so that we have a resource.
All right, thank you.
Any further comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries, six, five, zero, zero. For those watching at home, I apologize for the camera work. I need some practice, I guess. I would've turned it off a long time ago, because you guys have to remind me.
Our able assistant is not here.
Yeah, we usually have a student intern.
We miss him.
We sure do. So I apologize for that. Our next is, I'm sure this is right, special appropriation of $94,200 CNRE for acquisition program consistent with the capital improvements plan. As a result of FEMA reimbursements for storms and funds from the sale of old recycling trucks, we set aside funds in CNRE to be used for outfitting vehicles we purchase through the acquisition plan. At this time, we're requesting an appropriation of funds for this purpose. Included in the acquisition plan is a pickup truck for the police, for the public works, and a patrol car and a truck for the public, for the police department. For the PWD pickup, the funds needed are $5,000 for plow, $1,700 for lights. In addition, the plan includes $15,000 to purchase three stainless sanders, $5,000 for a snow blower for the Kubota, and $9,000 for a snow bucket for the large loader. For the police patrol car, funds as follows, $12,500 for computers and cameras, $6,000 for lights, $750 for lettering, and $6,000 for new state police radios. For the police patrol truck, funds as follows, $12,500 for computers and cameras, $7,000 for lights, $750 for lettering, $8,000 for new state police radios. For parks and rec, $5,000 for debris blower attachment. That's all the equipment that this includes. I'll need a motion.
I move to approve a special appropriation from CNRE Fund 32 in the amount of $94,200 to accounts to be established as follows. $15,000 PWD stainless sander, 2.0 CYD, $6,700 Public Works Department pickup truck equipment, $14,000 Public Works Department snow removal equipment, $53,500 Police Service, Police Patrol Vehicle Equipment, and $5,000 Parks and Rec debris blower attachment, which is consistent with the capital improvement plan, and forward to the Board of Finance for their approval.
Second.
It's been seconded. I'll note that Mr. Farmikas joined the Board, the panel tonight. Any comments? I'll move, we'll make a vote here, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstain?
Aye abstain.
Mr. Farmikas abstains. Five, zero, one.
I'm sorry?
I didn't know if you wanted to.
Yeah, I don't know either. Are you coming down here?
We can, I can do it from here if you want, or you can continue and...
I'll work the camera that I'm doing so great at. You can give him the gavel, too.
Give him the gavel, too.
My apologies to everyone, my daughter had surgery in the city today, and I had to go down and bring her back, so we got a little waylaid coming out of that and traffic. But thank you for your patience.
Mark, get him on.
Thank you to the Board for carrying on.
Paul, you have the agenda in front of you, I'm sure. We're at 2:00 I. right now.
Okay. You've moved, everything's moved along till then?
Oh.
We haven't moved anything around or something?
Don't tell them. Let that just be our little secret, everything went very smoothly.
All right, then you wanna continue on, or you want to...
No, you go ahead, you can take it right now.
We bought 166 acres.
The next item, aye, special appropriation, huh?
Nothing?
We bought a little land while you were away.
Yeah. I can tell Ron's not smiling, so that may be true.
He thought it was all right.
So we're on aye, special appropriation, $183,247.
Yep.
Yes?
Yes.
Fiscal year 1415, Board of Education School Security Grant. You have this in front of you, this is a combination of $77,222 in state funding, and our local match is $106,025, which will be used district-wide at all five of the schools for security upgrades. And the learn rent fee income will be funding the $106,25. And Anna has verified that that money is available in that account.
I will move to approve a special appropriation in the amount of $183,247 in CNRE Fund 32 for various district-wide school security improvements as awarded in the 2013 School Security Competitive Grant Program and sent to the Board of Finance for approval. This project is consistent with the 2014-2015 Capital Improvement Plan, and the source of the funds is $77,222 from the state grant and $106,025 from learn rent income.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor indicates...
I will vote on this issue, as I do not stand to benefit any more than any other person within the school community, so I feel comfortable voting on this.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed or abstain? Six, zero. Our next item is a special appropriation for $9,018.83 for Nuclear Safety Emergency Preparedness Fund, grant, and that is going to be used to upgrade the fiber network. This is money that we get every year to the Emergency Communications Center from this grant, and it's used for purposes up in that facility, and it's based on the salaries and things that we pay our Emergency Management Director, et cetera.
I'll move to approve a special appropriation of the Nuclear Safety Emergency Preparedness, or NSNP, or NSEP, grant funds in the amount of $9,018.83 to budget account 401-7725-224006. NSSEP equipment and revenue account 401-044001, Nuclear Safety Emergency Prep, NSSEP grants, and forward to the Board of Finance for their approval.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded, is there a discussion on this item? Hearing none, all those in favor indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed or abstain? Okay, next item is K., there's a numbers of bonding resolutions that, as you know, we look at this every year in this timeframe, in May, in June, and then in July, there's a refunding of the issues, and we put them out to bond, so we collect a lot of these things and then put them together to bond them out over a long term. So some are interest-only items, and then some are moved forward for a 20-year bond. So I have my bond book down there, and Anna, I had asked for the graphs, are they in this book? Copies of the graphs?
I, oh, you need a white book?
I took a blue one.
I didn't know what that was. Is that it?
This is not it, that's okay. I have my book here. Where did you put those?
It's in the black book.
In this one?
Right cover.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you very much for preparing all this. You should have with you, in front of you, a pavement management plan, which we will need for the first item. And then this is, I thought what we do is upgrade you on the existing and proposed debt service, if you wanna take that and pass it along, give one to Karen. This is a bar graph.
Get one.
That indicates where we are, looking for...
Pavement plan.
Pavement management.
Just...
Right? Okay, yeah, that's yours. I got one.
Got this.
I thought I started here.
Any, are there extras of those? You can, yeah, you can circulate them throughout, so that people in the back may wanna look at them, or... Anna, you have one of these?
Yes.
Okay. So this is, as you know, we started using these bar graphs some years ago to kinda indicate where we were in terms of debt service. That other information that I asked for you, Anna, did you...
It's in the front of my book.
It's in the front of my book. Okay, debt and refunding? Maybe you should show me what this is, so I can follow along here. Anyway, the bar graph, the bar graph looks like this for people that are looking at it. It is the light blue is the existing debt, the green is the debt that you are being asked to consider this evening, two, this is $2,975 less the sewer.
Yeah, so it's $2,060,000.
So it's $2,060,000, we're not gonna be considering the $915,000 for the sewer, so we'll take that off. So this is $2,960,000 that we're adding, and that would be reflected in the green along the top. So that's where we are, and as you know, we've tried to keep our annual debt service below 6 million, and preferably below 5.5 million annually, and this, these projects do that. We have started with the roads, we've been doing that every year for the last few years at $900,000. Parking rec is looking for $100,000 for improvements to Bridebrook, there's a roof, and I believe that's at the central office that needs to be replaced, and there's some state reimbursement coming off, we'll get into those details, the network upgrade, and the tennis courts. And those are the items that make up $2,060,000. So that's what this graph shows you, where we are, and this, this item here.
Just like what all the debt payments have been every year going back to 2007 and even, and then this is outstanding town debt, water debt total for all the things just for years, and then this is the information on the rest.
This is the bottom, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so I asked Anna to put a compilation list together, and I'm sorry, she's catching me up now, because we didn't have time, obviously, today to review this, so. It shows that going back in 2007, our annual debt payment was $6,562,000, and in 2008 was $6,294,000, 2009 was $6,314,000, 2010, $6,79,000, 2011 was $5,412,000, 2012 was $5,164,000, and 2013 was $4,900,000, and then this year, six of 14 is $4,781,000. And then we propose next year's payment, debt payment, to be $5,105,000. So we've kind of gone from a high, when I got here, of $6,562,000, and we brought it down to the high fours, low five numbers over the last four or five years, while we've been able to grow the community and replace a number of things, including a lot of the things you voted on this evening, and the bond debt that we've done, including some of the big projects. I thought you might be interested in the outstanding debt for town, for the community, in 2007 was $46,681,000. It went to a low of $35,229,000 as of 6/30/14. The outstanding debt for water was $1,629,000 back in 2007, and then it went up to a high of $6,193,000 in 2013, and this year, we're projecting it to be $4,538,000. So that is, of course, the, a lot of the water projects that we've done over the last few years have increased that debt. For 2013, I'm sorry, 2015, we're projecting the outstanding debt for water to be $4,242,000. For a total of outstanding debt back in 2007, $48,311,000. It went down to $43,000,000 in 2009, kept that pace through 10 and 11. In 2012, it went down to $39,844,000. Then back up in 13, as some of the larger projects came on with the, with the water and the field, and the field services building, et cetera, went down to about $39,000,000. And then for 2015, June 30th, we're projecting $48,641,000. So it's almost exactly where we started seven years ago, but we've been able to have all of these improvements throughout the community. So that's just some background that you have, and I'm, you know, Anna and I are happy to answer any questions with regard to that. But the number one item is roads, so it's $900,000 we've been asking for every year, and we've been working on upgrading all of the local town roads, and I'm sure you've seen many of those improvements as we work our way through. We know that Mike passed away a couple of years ago, and he began the process of working on these roads with Bill and Chuck, and putting that down, and we kind of, you know, Bill did a yeoman's job, kinda keeping up with it, and new and different ways to provide road surfaces at a different cost. And then you've heard me talk about the fact that it's $10,000 to $15,000 to maintain good roads, and it's $300,000 to $400,000 to reconstruct roads that need complete modification. So when Joe Brigaw came, our new Public Works Director who is here, and is able to go over this, should you like, we put together, and he just completed this five-year management plan for the roads on a computer model that we have downstairs. So I don't know, Joe, if you wanna kinda give a quick overview of how this looks, a little 50,000-foot view?
Yes, okay.
Okay, and then I don't, I don't know how you wanna proceed with these items, if you wanna have, listen to Joe a little bit, and then, and then talk about that, but just all of these items are included in this bar graph and included in the numbers that I gave you as an overview. Thank you, Joe.
Yeah, thank you for letting me speak on this. I'll keep it to as quick as I can, just a minute or two, but the roads are the most important thing that the Public Works Department takes care of, but we have 116 miles of road in town. So when I, when I got here, my staff is a fantastic staff, they gave me some road products that they were interested, but because it's the most important thing that we maintain, I just wanna make sure, I'm from here, drive the roads all the time, but I still wanna make sure I drove every road. So we drove every road, rated every road, and tried to come up with a plan. So if someone comes in, what about my road? It's not like, yeah, I know your road, I know exactly, you got the puddle here, it's all in the head. So by doing that, was able to, and in your package, was put together, and the chart here, I mean, there's a lot of numbers on that, but it basically addresses that for the 117 miles of road, how, what's the percentage, how many miles of each treatment would you do? Because as Mr. Farmik was saying, you know, you could spend a dollar on crack seal, and it's in the last thing, you could spend a dollar, for every dollar you spend on crack sealing decent roads, it costs $30 to repair a bad road. So I know it's politically tough at times to tell the person that has a really bad road, we're not fixing their road right now, but we have, you know, it's our responsibility to keep 116 miles of road, instead of putting all our resources into a quarter-mile road a year, because you'll never catch up. So that's what this analysis does, it goes over all the roads, it gives you a pie chart of the percentages of the treatment per miles in the town, the amount of money that we're looking into. But now our staff has marching orders, we have, we have a plan in place that we're gonna start going forward and allocating this money. I did come on board in November, it's my understanding in the past, the town was gracious enough to have been putting aside $900,000, and that's great. It also shows you in this chart, you know, I'm taking that on top of the town aid road, that's what TAR stands for, the town aid road monies. I think you heard through the budgetary process, because the Public Works Department was up a higher percentage, because we were given an extra $181,000 from the state, that's getting put right into the roads here. So any of that money that we can have, we're trying as best we can to spread out, not only, not only in one area of town, like we're not, you know, targeting Nyonic, we're spreading it out throughout the town, so as many residents get the benefit of these road services. So that's basically my, hopefully, the 50,000-foot view of what it is, but, you know, in this, the last, the last piece is, is the curves, and I'm sure they talked about this in the past, but it gives the concept of pavement management, which most towns are trying to be proactive with, and if you try to keep decent roads in good condition, you're never gonna be in the position of having to spend the $30 to $40, as opposed to $1 for crack sealing. So that's what we're trying to do, we're trying to best spend the town's money, we have a plan in place, the $900,000 certainly will help in moving that forward, because if you don't spend about that level, the roads are gonna start going down, and they start, as you see in these curves, they start going down exponentially, it goes down quick once they go down. So we're trying to hit high-profile roads to people driving all the time, we're trying to deal with neighborhoods, we're trying to deal with some, Flanders Road is trying to deal with some Nyonic, we're trying to spread it around, so that's, that's our plan.
What we've done over the last few years with some of the major reconstruction roads, like I believe Farrell Court, Walnut Hill, Upper Walnut Hill, Grassy Hill, was when we took $400,000 one year on those roads up north and did the drainage, and then the next year, we took $400,000 and did the pavement. So we've been able to kinda manage it over time and take control of it. So I'll open it up for questions, or if you wanna put a motion on the table for, for the roads portion?
I'll make a resolution here. Resolution making an appropriation in the amount of $900,000 for the rehabilitation of various town roads and the authorization, or authorizing the issuance of $900,000 bonds of the town to meet said appropriation and pending the issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowings for such purpose, a copy of which is attached here, too. Is hereby adopted and recommended for approval by the Board of Finance and the legal voters of the town at town meeting.
Second.
Okay, motion is made, or resolution is made, is there a second?
Second. There was.
Seconded, thank you, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. We'll skip over the sewer, I can talk about that after, if you like, but the park and rec is the next one, it's $100,000. You have pictures here, Mr. Putnam is in the audience.
I have, I have new ones.
You have new ones?
Yes.
For everybody?
Yes.
Okay. What, what has happened here is the park is aging up there, and there's a number of things that are in, have been broken, and you'll see, some of these pictures will show you the, do you wanna pass these out around the, maybe another copy of those, is that the same or different?
Yeah, they're some very similar.
Just different, okay. So you see on the front page of this, there is some broken barriers that are rotted out and need to be repaired, and there's some old benches and things, and you see the dugouts, and we're proposing the $100,000 to replace the parking barriers in the older section of the lot, concrete ballards currently with wooden slats, and replace pressure-treated wooden barriers that are similar. Do you wanna review this?
Sure.
Would it be easier if you did that?
Yeah, absolutely. The park's coming up on 25 years old, believe it or not, it was opened in 1989, so the parking barriers are the existing concrete pillars that are there, and they're all, they're all cracking, and we don't have much life left on them, so we're looking to replace those with the pressure-treated wood parking barriers like we have at McCook, and also the newer section of Bridebrook that was done has the pressure-treated wooden. We have no, currently, we have no shelter in case of poor rain, so I have a picnic pavilion that's pictured on the upper right-hand corner of that, and we would like to do something along those lines, and also be able to rent that out for parties as well, and for special events. So there really is five projects involved in this. We have no covering on our dugouts, so we have nothing to protect our athletes and people that rent our fields from the elements. And then also, you can see a picture on the second page, two pictures there, our basketball courts, our asphalt courts, and our cracking, and there's something that, you know, we're gonna have to do something for playability-wise, so that the cracks don't get too big. And then also, the fencing between Bridebrook Park and the Fire Department is there as well, and you can see that has, needs to be replaced. So those total, those five projects are where the $100,000 comes up with.
When did we do the, didn't we do the basketball?
When, when did we do the, didn't we do the basketball? Now, now it occurs to me, it probably was ten years ago.
Six.
It was six.
Yeah, I, I saw the same thing. It's a three-year warranty on it because we did.
The asphalt, and we might get into this a little bit in the, in the tennis court discussion. Once you get cracks on an asphalt court, they're gonna come back. So it's just a matter, we have to, we have to maintain them now. So, you know, every, and they give us a three-year warranty and guess what, after four.
They know exactly what's gonna happen in a fourth year.
Without question.
Yeah.
Without question.
So what was that?
So that.
Six years ago, huh?
Yes.
August of two thousand and nine. So I don't know how you'd like to proceed with this item?
I'll make a resolution. Resolution making an appropriation in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars for the planning, design and construction of various capital improvements to Parrot's Park at Bridebrook and authorizing the issuance of a hundred thousand dollars of bonds of the town to meet said appropriation and pending the issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowings for such purpose. A copy of which is attached here too. Is hereby adopted and recommended for approval by the Board of Finance and the legal voters of the town at town meeting.
Second.
Motion is made in second. Is there a discussion or any questions for Dave?
Oh my god. I just wanted to say that the, the two big things, I think, are the, uh, the pavilion and the dugouts with, with roofs. Because having been there and done all that, lightning comes and it comes quick and you have nowhere to go. There's not a place you can hide yourself. And it's, uh, that's, that's a huge safety deal. And I, I think that's, uh, it needs to be done.
Well, it's a heat stroke deal too. I mean, they're, they're rate, they're exposed.
There is not a spot to get out of it out there. It is not, the trees are, you know, it's just not enough. So, yeah.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, Dave.
Thanks, Dave.
The next item is the roof. Uh, this is at the central office. Now, you know, we're going into this whole new school discussion. There's money put aside for architect review. We kinda balanced this before we brought this for you. I mean, it's, uh, the roof is kinda leaking all over the place. So it's kind of a damned if we do and damned if we don't deal. But the construction subtotal on this is a hundred and eighty-one thousand, one hundred dollars. The project contingency is twenty-seven, so there may not, they may not use that. There's a fifteen thousand architectural fee and fifty-five hundred in, in other fees, you know, legal, testing, et cetera, for a total of two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and seventy. This project does qualify for state reimbursement at forty-four point sixty-four percent, which credits ninety-two thousand, seventy-one dollars off that, leaving a net cost of a hundred and thirty-seven thousand, ninety-nine dollars for the town. So I think what we have to do is to appropriate the entire two hundred and, we're asking for two hundred and thirty thousand dollars, which is the two twenty-nine, one seventy rounded up. And then we'll subtract the state reimbursement of the forty-four percent off that. And I think there's members of the Board of Education here, if you wanna have anybody speak to the, to the roof quality. And there are some pictures that I have of this roof. This is an old-style roof. And you can see some of the deterioration. So we can pass that down. You can take a minute to look at you, look at it. And while, while that's happening, you know, even if the schools, I think, were, were approved, the elementary schools, I think, were, you know, three to five years away. And so we, you know, we'll be in, in the situation of having to use this building there. So it's not something that I would like to spend money on, but I, you know, it's a leaky roof.
Make the following resolution. A resolution making an appropriation in the amount of two hundred and thirty thousand dollars for the planning, design, construction, replacement and installation of a new roof at the Board of Education Central Office and authorizing the issuance of two hundred and thirty thousand dollars in bonds of the town to meet said appropriation and pending the issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowings for such purpose. A copy of which is attached here too. Is hereby adopted and recommended for approval by the Board of Finance and the legal voters of the town at town meeting.
Resolution is made. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion?
Yes. In the plans that have been broached so far, is there any indication that the central office building would be demolished in either one of those plans and one of the three plans?
So.
May I present Brian Reese, who is the acting superintendent, or is Jim back? Assistant Superintendent, you know, kind of taking over for Jim while he's on, caring his, for his bride.
Thanks, Paul. In terms of your question, the central office facility is not in the process of being reviewed as a possible upgrade. Right now, it's a, solely an elementary school project. And this is the central office school facility. So the two are separate.
But, so you, so you do not foresee in the potential plans that this building would be demolished?
There's no, there's no alternative plan. So correct. There's no discussion about having central office somewhere else. I think the only other piece is that there have been two firms who have come and informed us that this, these are in fact needed repairs and that the roof has outlived its life. The guess is somewhere in the fifty-year range for the slate roof that's up there. And there are current leaks. And, you know, this is a, this is a beautiful building that probably should be maintained. And a roof, as you know, is a major, a major piece to maintaining an older building.
We have to understand we've been down this route before where we've paid money to have the roof replaced and then decided that the building would no longer exist.
I've heard those stories.
So we don't wanna go down the same path again.
Of course.
Thank you.
Further discussion?
Is a slate going back on the roof?
The, while I did make a case for slate roofing, for aesthetic purposes, the, we've been told that asphalt would do a great job and it would probably be a gray. So at glance, you would not probably notice any difference. So no.
Thank you.
So the, the other thing is if you take this, this hundred and thirty-seven thousand, hundred, thirty-seven thousand, one hundred divided over twenty years, it's about a seven thousand dollar payment, you know, per year to keep this roof on and, you know.
I thought he said two, I thought it was the two hundred and thirty-three thousand.
Two hundred and thirty less the state reimbursement of the forty-four percent of ninety-two thousand brings it down to a hundred and thirty-seven one hundred or a hundred and thirty-seven, zero, ninety-nine. So that, that's what we anticipate the cost to be. And that also includes twenty-seven thousand dollars in contingency. So it could be as low as, if we don't use that contingency, a hundred and ten thousand, a hundred and fifteen. So.
Really don't have an alternative. I mean, it's not going away anytime soon and that has to be done.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second, Karen. Is that correct? Is there further discussion?
I feel comfortable voting on this as I have no intention of ever working in that building. So I will not benefit any more than any other taxpayer in town.
Really?
Really.
Stranger things have happened.
That's one off the replacement list for the.